Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I now call our mayor and city council work session to order at 6:00 P. M. First on the agenda, we have the Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a 2025 Ford E-350 service body for the Department of Parks and Recreation. I believe Director Tim Miller from Department of Public Works, you now have the floor. You're on mute, Director Miller.
There we go. I think I got it now. Okay, good evening, and Mayor Sidnor, President Clark, and Laurel City Council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a 2025 Ford E-350 service body for the Department of Parks and Recreation. This department solicited several quotes, including from vendors on state and county contracts. The accepted quote is from the Baltimore County contract number 0004504 with Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland. The quotes were as follows: Apple Ford of Columbia, $62,500; Upper Marlboro Ford, $67,500; and Bob Bell Ford of Glen Burnie, $69,900. Funding for this equipment is provided for the fiscal year 2025 adopted CIP fleet replacement program. The cost for this vehicle is $62,500, and this new addition will increase the fleet. It's recommended that the purchase of this vehicle for a total cost of $62,500 from Apple Ford of Columbia. This vehicle is basically to provide a second, I'll call it a work truck. It's a covered truck which has access in the bed of the truck for Parks and Recreation, who now has two maintenance people. And the previous truck that they have will be utilized for that. The one gentleman that was there was in the interim using a pickup truck, and that will be provided, as I was told, for the janitors to move between buildings now as an updated vehicle. So we're asking for your approval.
Thank you, Director Miller. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
I'm Madam President. Thank you. And just an update for folks too, and some of the queries before. I believe we're able to fund this from savings from a prior year. So I think it's helpful for folks to know that we're able to make use of some savings from a year before to fund the purchase of this, which I think is a good fiscal management for the city.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Mills, I believe you had your hand up?
Good evening. So Director Miller, is this vehicle, is it going to be equipped with your snow equipment?
It will be utilized by Parks and Recreation, so I can't quite answer that. But right now, it is not going to be provided with a plow or purchased with a plow. But we do most of the streets, and I believe that they may have a plow or two that they could utilize from their yard. But right now, I would, it's solely for the two maintenance men who go around and handle different repairs throughout the city at the various buildings and facilities that we have.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, does anyone have any objections on moving this to our regular virtual meeting on Monday, March 10? Okay, seeing none, this will be placed on the agenda for an introduction and first public hearing for our regular virtual meeting on March 10th, which will be on Monday. Next on our agenda, we have a bid recommendation for Automated Speed Enforcement Camera Program contract with the Laurel Police Department. Chief Russell Hamel, Chief of Police for the City of Laurel, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Clark, as well as the other city council members. Thank you for your time this evening. So our department is respectfully requesting permission to sign an agreement regarding automated enforcement camera program services for speed enforcement within the City of Laurel. We are requesting to ride the agreement between our current vendor, Ultimate, and the Calvert County, Maryland agreement, as is permissible under city policy. This agreement has been extensively reviewed by the city solicitor, Department of Police Personnel, I'm sorry, Department of Police, as well as the Department of Budget and Personnel Services. This is believed to be the best option for our speed enforcement program at this time. The contract between the parties effectively addresses our program needs and allows for a seamless continuation and expansion of the current program, which we have been pleased with since the current vendor purchased our original vendor and assumed responsibility for the program and the contract. The Laurel Automated Enforcement Program Regarding Speed Enforcement is respectfully requesting to ride the current Calvert County contract for speed enforcement services. The contract includes a flat fee per site for the maintenance of the equipment in issuing and mailing the citations, with an additional cost for more than 2,500 citations per month as an aggregate. The costs associated with the program are paid for the proceeds of the paid citations issued prior to distribution of the remainder to the city. It is respectfully recommended that the mayor and city council approve the continuation of the Automated Speed Enforcement Program via the Calvert County contract per the provisions provided within that agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, I believe this is a one-year contract annually renewable?
Yes, it can be. And this is what we've had in the past. One-year contract renewed up to one-year increments for a total of four years.
Okay.
I'm sorry, additional, four additional years on top of the first.
And then loosely, in terms of percent of citation revenue for the program, would you say like what percent to the vendor, what percent to the city? Is it like 50/50 split, 70/30? If you don't know that off the top, that's fine.
Well, I could tell you, once we go over 2,500 citations, and I'm not an accountant, so you might want to correct my math, but it appears to be about a 30% for the lookups after that. It's $12 cost, and then the remainder goes to the city.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, I see Councilmember Mills. Please proceed.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
So just had a couple of questions. The first thing is, though, the Calvert County, what's the significance of working with Calvert County, I mean, by being there so far?
So what it allows us to do is ride on their contract, so you don't have to put it out to a full bidding process.
Okay, no other police, you know, locally?
Well, let's see. I spoke to one other local department today that is going to do the same thing we are. And I, Mr. Mills, I could have sworn, if the deputy's on here, he might remember. I thought there was another local agency that did the same thing, but I just don't remember at this stage. This is our current contract.
Okay, okay. And now, speaking of, oh, the, so I had a couple for you. You said this funding will be coming from the tickets, but couldn't this also come from like the, you know, the bigger project? I mean, the bigger funding where, you know, like, what is that? Not CAP, but?
CIP.
CIP, but I mean, not CIP. What is that funding where? From the tickets, from the tickets from like the state? You know, that, that aspect?
Well, sir, the way these contracts are done is it's taken out of the tickets that are issued for that program. So like we have a red light program with another vendor, same thing there.
The red lights, right.
Before they, so that's a completely different vendor. We keep separate vendors on this, so that vendor does the same thing. If the citations are paid, they eventually send the payment to Michelle's office.
Okay, okay, okay.
It means the city doesn't have to write a check.
Okay, so that, okay, well, that answers my question then. So I just was, I just wanted to make sure that, because you may have something else down the line that we might need to come out our pockets for. You know, and I just wanted to know if this was going to be something to come out our pockets or from the tickets, like city tickets or, you know, the boxes that we have? Is that, is that something so, is that something separate? Or is that like, you know, like state funding or the federal, I mean, the city funding from those red light cameras?
The red light cameras are under another vendor. Our speed camera program is under a separate vendor, so both of those, they're bifurcated. And what happens is, at the end of the month, the, once the fee is paid for each, then the remainder is sent to the city. But I will say, multiple, multiple Maryland agencies use the same vendor.
Got you. Okay, so it is two, it is two.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That, that, just wanted to get that clear. All right, now, as far as the technology, can you specifically explain the technology of it, if you can, for me, please?
I'm smiling because this will be, this will really be below most of your technology levels, the way I'm going to explain it. A car comes into the beam from the camera. If it's exceeding speed on it by 12 or more miles per hour, the ticket is generated. The ticket from there is then reviewed currently by a police sergeant, who determines, they look at the, make sure the tag's the same, make sure the speed matches up, and they verify the ticket as being valid. There's currently legislation in Annapolis to allow that to be a civilian employee, a sworn employee to do it. I think that's probably going to make it through. And, and so the technology is really the camera, plus the state sets the limit. You can only issue tickets for 12 or more miles per hour over the speed limit.
Okay, all right. So now, including that, what you just described, have you heard of flock cameras?
Yes, sir.
So would you not want the flock camera technology? Because that's doing way more, you know, as far as the license plate, the finding criminals and investigative purposes, you know what I mean?
Yes, numerous, different vendors have different programs like that. In our next budget, you'll see something similar to that in the request.
Okay, that's good. That'd be good.
It's called license plate reader cameras, and but, and I won't go into that deeply. There's, there's a lot of laws and parameters set around that, make sure it's used in a certain manner.
Well, that's actually being used right now on the outskirts of the City of Laurel.
Yes, sir.
So that, you know, just saying that if it's being used on the outskirts, then, you know, perhaps we should, because if those are riding on the outskirts of the City of Laurel, then, you know, then we need that protection within the City of Laurel.
There's certain parameters within the Maryland Coordination and Analysis Center required by state law for such cameras to operate lawfully within the state of Maryland. So we make sure we adhere to the, to the laws that follow that.
So, so are you saying that we can't use it?
That, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying we follow what the parameters are set up within the state.
Okay. We'll talk.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Chief Hamel, I just have one question. If possible, could you please clarify for our residents what it means that we are requesting to ride on the agreement between our current vendor? Just so everyone understands.
Yes, ma'am. So it just means that there's a, Calvert County, for an example, recently negotiated a contract with Ultimate for their program. Ultimate is our current vendor, as are current vendors for numerous jurisdictions. When we looked at that agreement, as our agreement with them was coming to a close, we determined that we felt it was the best avenue for the city to stay with the current vendor that we have, so we don't lose time on cameras being replaced, that we have a good relationship with, that there's certain things that are in the works right now to help expand our program. We felt that they, that was the best option, especially when it's one-year contracts. If there's issues with the contract, President Clark, I hope it doesn't happen, but I may be back in here if there's issues with it, asking you for some grace on the contract, the future contracts. I don't anticipate that, but I like that provision in this contract that allows for the year-to-year evaluation. But all it is, is we don't have to put it out to a mass bid process, because somebody else already did that work.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. I just have one additional question. I assume, because you said that there is an individual that looks at the tickets after they're generated, that the accuracy of those tickets are pretty high? Do you mind just answering that?
Yes, ma'am. The accuracy's generally high with the, with the, and it doesn't have to be a sworn person. That's why that law, I think, is going to adjust this year down in the State House. But it's somebody that's actually making sure that tag on that car is matching the tag that's coming up on the citation. They, they have other things they can do to make sure that, you know, it is actually 12 miles or more over the speed limit. We want accuracy. We don't want to send out citations that there's any question on whatsoever. So yes, there are citations that we say, no, that's not going out. It doesn't meet the standards that we want to meet, but the ones that go out are meeting those standards.
Thank you, sir. I also see Councilwoman Johnson, you have a question?
Yes, just really quickly, just wanted to clarify. So as far as the funding, so it says the costs associated with this program are paid. Does that cost include maintenance and upkeep of the actual equipment, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They take care of, you heard my answer to Councilmember Mills regarding technology. They certainly don't want me touching the cameras, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? I don't see any. Does anyone have any hesitation on adding this to our regular virtual March 10th meeting? Councilmember Mills, did you mean to raise your hand or? Go right ahead. I think you wanted to ask a question or a comment?
Yeah, for the chief. I just, you know, just popped up. Is there any, any, any thought to want to do for just the city as far as when it comes to contracts? You know, kind of leaving other municipalities and, you know, leaving them out of city affairs?
This is a pretty common practice amongst governments, so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel. We saw that this contract existed. We saw that the numbers were favorable for what we wanted to do. We saw it was favorable for the expansion of our program. If I thought any of those things didn't match up, we would be putting this out to a full bidding process and inviting numerous other vendors in. But in this case, this creates a seamless approach for us, including for the expansion. But there will be, and we do this routinely, we do this on the ammunition. We ride the state contract for ammunition.
Okay.
They've already negotiated the lowest possible price.
Got you.
That price point that we think we can achieve. So it's, it's just a, we feel a proper utilization of our personnel resources to do it this way.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we didn't miss anyone. Are there any additional questions or comments? I think I saw that there were no objections to adding this to the regular virtual meeting on Monday, March 10. So with that, we'll proceed and add that to our agenda for Monday. Thank you, Chief Hamel, for your time and for the explanations as well.
Thank you, President Clark, and thank you, councilmembers. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
You as well. Moving to our next agenda item, we have ordinance number 2039, an ordinance mending the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, and to provide an effective date. Director Michelle Saylor, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Sidnor, and councilmembers. This is our fifth amendment to the FY 2025 budget and CIP. If you will see page three of the ordinance, I believe it's page seven in your packet. So we're taking this opportunity before the March 18th date of finalization for the separation or the dissolution of the Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management to reflect the new department names in the budget. So those are the highlighted items that you'll see on page three. So I've named the Department of Emergency Management. We have the Department of Human Services, the LMSC Program Budget. And then further down, you'll see Department of Human Services Laurel Helping Hands Budget. Excuse me. As we've budgeted for these departments since their inception, they've always been separate. So at this point, there, there is no separation of money, because they've been budgeted at the department level separately all along. So this part is just about the name of the department in keeping with the charter resolution that you passed at the end of February. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you, Director Saylor. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I don't think that I see any. Councilmember Mills, I see you're unmuted. Did you have a question?
Sorry, yeah, the, so on the, let me, just give me one second. My prayer time. So, well, first of all, good evening, Director Saylor.
Good evening, sir.
And to set you on here, I want to say, you know, happy, what is it, Women's Month?
Oh, yes.
If you didn't know that.
Ms. Johnson, we know that.
Let me ask you this. So with these two categories, 325, 326, so with these two categories right here, and this same, are you saying, literally saying that there was no, with the split, the funding still is the same?
Correct. We've been budgeting, we've been budgeting them separately all along. Ever since we, ever since we started budgeting, I think it was two years ago that we started budgeting for the multi-service center programs. And separate from that is the maintenance budget for that building. And then when we took over the Helping Hands from the county years ago, that's always been separate. It's always been a separate department budget for tracking purposes, knowing that we would get grants, ideally that we would be able to get grant funding. It's certainly easier for us to have them, and because their purpose is distinct. So even though Human Services, or, and Crem before it, even though we had Crem as the umbrella and the three divisions that were underneath of that, they were, always had their own department budgets, just for, for my sanity, if nothing else, but for tracking purposes.
So, so it's almost like, well, here you have three categories, but I mean, it's almost like, well, I'm sorry, well, it's, it's two categories, two blue and one green, is how I'm describing it, of what I'm looking at right here, right? So it's almost like taking a hundred dollar bill and just splitting it into the two fifties. Same, same dollar amount, but splitting the two on what we agreed back in February to separate the two.
Except for the fact that, except for the fact that 326, when the budget was adopted, when, when the FY 2025 budget was adopted, the 326 budget was adopted with $563,417. That's the way it was originally adopted. They were separate at the depart, what I call the department level. These, these numbers here are department numbers. So the 326 multi-service center budget was, the money was always being kept separate from emergency management and from Helping Hands. Each of the three always had a separate pot of money that we were expensing from.
Which makes it easy for you to break down.
Yes, and it'd be easy for, for all of you as well. If you ask me, how much does it cost to run Helping Hands? Then I can just go to the 530 budget and run a report, rather than have one budget and three different purposes and try to?
Try to break it up or divide it into thirds or something?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? I don't see any, I almost called you doctor. Director Saylor, I do have two questions, if you don't mind clarifying or providing additional information. Under the whereas mentioned, additional funding is needed for the council chambers broadcast equipment, and then certain corrections are needed for the employee training and tuition budgets. Do you mind providing additional information about that?
Right, no, not at all. Madam President, at the bottom there of the same page three, you'll see a reduction in the employee training account where I've identified that we have available funding to be moved into the employee tuition budget. As we prepare the budgets, the departments put forth their requests for training and tuition. Training is for seminars, certain certifications that are required of certain positions that they take, you know, ongoing training or just industry-related training, you know, as we have the vast array of disciplines in all the departments. So that's what we budget for in training. And tuition is actually college tuition for classes that are deemed to have to do with the person's position or if it's a class that can be taken in advancement of a degree, like a master's degree or bachelor's degree. So I've identified the funding to move into tuition, because as we prepared the 2025 budget, I missed two of the requests that had been made by employees for tuition.
Thank you. Did you also have additional information about the council chambers broadcast equipment? An additional funding for that? Thank you.
So on page four of the ordinance, eight of your packet, you'll see the Capital Improvement Program spreadsheet, excuse me. So if you'll recall, in ordinance 2035, we had taken that snapshot in time of Morton Place and Stanley Place, where engineering had already been performed. We were using ARPA funds. It was determined that we needed to move the ARPA funds to projects that could be done more quickly to meet the ARPA deadlines that we were facing. So that being done, now we're ready to do Morton and Stanley Place, so. So that being done, now we're ready to do Morton and Stanley Place, so. That's where you'll see the addition of the fifty-five thousand. To Morton, a hundred and fifteen thousand to Stanley, a hundred thousand to Eighth Street. Because the, actually, I believe Mr. Miller can correct me, but I think that the scope of that. Eighth Street is, uh, bigger than it was. Um.
Michelle, that is. That is correct. Yes, we're doing the, from one end to the other.
Right, that's right. From Main Street all the way to Green Hill Avenue.
Correct.
Right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Miller. Um, Little Montgomery Street, we're ready to close out. But that'll be an additional six thousand four fifty-four. And then Carroll Avenue and Park, Carroll Avenue, Park Avenue and Cambridge Circle are all complete. So we're taking those funds and reallocating those, um, projects. To the Morton, Stanley, Eighth, Little Montgomery. And sidewalks and curb and gutter. And those are just the sidewalks, curb and gutter all over the city, you know, the patchwork. For the diff, you know, squares that are broken or, um, the curb and gutter that needs to be done. Um, generally, the curb and gutter that's done. When a street is reconstructed is part of the street project. It doesn't come from this separate sidewalk and curb and gutter. And then the council chambers, um, we needed more microphones to go with the new systems. So that's the additional fifteen thousand. In the council chamber project.
Thank you. I didn't know the microphones were that expensive, but.
I believe it's ten, ten, five or, I think it's. Ms. Williams can correct me. Well, we can get you that number.
That is correct. It, it is a little over ten.
Ms. Williams can correct me. Well, we can get you that number.
That is correct. It is.
Yeah, so ten, ten microphones.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the overall change to the C I P is just the additional fifteen thousand. Because those, those funds come from the, um, the cable money, the peg money.
Okay, thank you.
The rest is just reallocating, so. But that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from the council or comments? Uh, Councilmember Mills?
Uh, just, I wanted to, just to clarify, so the, the, um. The numbers in red is the rea- re, um, reallocating. Going up to the Morton Place, Stanley and Eighth Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If I could, if I could just add, based on a question from Mr. Simmons. Um, and consultation with Mr. Miller. Um, so when the non-destructive pavement evaluations are performed on the streets to see what streets need to be redone. Um, they provide the city with an estimate, which is what we use to budget in the C I P. Um, and those prices are taken at that point in time. So now the prices of the materials and especially the gasoline to run all the equipment has. Um, significantly decreased. So that's why we have the savings in these street projects. Which we're thankfully, um, able to reallocate to other projects.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any additional questions or comments. Does anyone have any reservations about adding this to our March tenth virtual regular meeting? Seeing none, um, this will be placed on the agenda for an introduction and first public hearing at our Monday, March tenth. Regular meeting. Thank you, Director Saylor, for your time and for answering our questions. We appreciate it. Moving to our next agenda item, number five will be ordinance number two zero four zero. For this ordinance, uh, of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending Laurel City Code Chapter sixteen taxation. Article one, section sixteen dash ten, elderly and veteran tax credit program and providing an effective date. Councilmember Adrian Simmons, you now have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this ordinance is primarily a typographical change. Um, the gist is that the city. Authored its, or the city can only provide a real estate tax credit to the degree the state of Maryland permits us to. And, uh, back in twenty eighteen, the state opened a door to create a elderly and veterans tax credit. And, and then twenty twenty, the city therefore adopted one at the city level. Um, but that original state credit said it couldn't be any more than five years. So if you were, for instance, elderly and you claimed it. Uh, after the fifth year, you could no longer claim it anymore. Uh, it turns out that the state in twenty twenty-two lifted that five-year limit. Um, and therefore enabled municipalities like ours to also lift our five-year limit. So. This primarily is to sort of edit, to allow us to, to sort of lift that. And to the, also clarify that the credit is on the first five hundred thousand of assessed value. So. Um, one other piece of information that might be helpful for folks to know as well is that the amount of the credits granted by the city. Are set in the budget, I believe for this line item, it's set at twenty-five thousand currently. But so as folks apply, it's, um, uh, applied against that budget line. So. I appreciate the ability to introduce this and certainly welcome any questions folks may have.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. I see Councilmember Cole has a question. Please proceed.
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Simmons, for finding this. Um. From time to time, we do need to update these. Uh, I think it's important for our seniors that we do extend this so that it's not just a time limit. Some of us live in our houses much more than five years, so this is incredibly helpful for the residents. Thank you. You have my support on this.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Are there any additional questions? Excuse me, or comments from the council? I don't see any. Thank you as well, Councilmember Simmons, for working on this. Are there any objections to adding this to our virtual regular meeting on Monday, March tenth? I don't see any objections or reservations, so this will be added to our agenda for our Monday, March tenth virtual meeting. Uh, for our first public hearing. And I think we are at the end of the agenda. So thank you, everyone, for today's, for your time today, um, during our work session with no further business to come before the mayor and city council. This meeting is now adjourned at six thirty-five P M. Have a good.